All right, so next we're going to cover the wastewater. And here's a little background to recap. The last rate increase was February 2009. And the 2012 wastewater master plan identified about $11.3 million of capital projects over the next 20 years. And the city has identified an additional $150,000 per year in repairs and replacements. So here's a schedule of your current rates. Your single-family residences pay $71.92 per month. Commercial establishments pay $90.95 per month. And then apartment houses and mobile home parks pay per rentable unit of $71.92. Then you have an other institutions charged based on cost per gallon of sewer treatment. So here's the revenue requirements for wastewater. The wastewater enterprise currently collects about $2.1 million a year in revenue. And we're proposing 9% per year increases for the next five years. That'll increase revenues to about $3.3 million a year. And that is designed to fund $750,000 per year of capital projects as identified in the master plan, plus $150,000 a year of additional repairs and replacements. So we've provided several options to consider. And we've conducted a cost of service analysis for option one. And this would just be adjusting the current rate structure based on our cost of service in the first year and then escalating it by 9% in the outer years. So, single-family, mobile home, and multifamily would pay a fixed rate per unit. Currently, it's $71.92, and that would go up to $113.04. The commercial and industrial per establishment fee would go from $90.95 per month to $142.73. The other institutional is currently charged about .0149 cents per gallon of winter use, and that would go up to .0218. And then Six Mile Village is currently charged .0142 cents per gallon of flow, and that would go up to about .015. It's, we're showing it going down in the first year because we've taken into account lower flows and loadings, lower strength factors for that Six Mile Village. So then, option two, we would add a differential, and this is kind of an immediate rate structure change. For residential, we would differentiate between the single-family user and the mobile home and multifamily. So there would be a decrease for those mobile home and multifamily customers from $71.92 a month to $62.20. And then, single-family would see an increase of 71, from $71.92 to $82.94. And then that would be escalated. Commercial, industrial, we're proposing a differential based on strength. So domestic strength would go from $90.95 to $139.03. And high strength would go from $90.95 to $257.50. And similar with other institutional, we would have a high-strength category.
Can you expand a little bit on that strength issue?
Right, so for the strength issue, currently, there's no differentiation, so it's kind of charge an average rate per gallon. So this would kind of break that into a domestic strength versus high strength. And we would factor in the higher strengths from certain customers, such as restaurants. So any type of dining establishment would fall under that high-strength category.
As measured how? Just their business classification in general, so rating?
Yeah, good question. So we use the state revenue guidelines for flows and loadings of the different customer classes, so it's industry-standard strength factors for those customers.
Okay, thanks.
And then, option three, we're proposing kind of phasing in the rate differential. So you end up in the same place in year five, but we're phasing in the increases gradually over time. So you won't see any rate decreases in the option three. So here is a regional rate survey. And so currently, Angels Camp is about $72, and it's below the survey average of $73.75. And option one through three is anywhere from $79 a month up to $83 a month. So it put you a little bit above the survey average for the region. Here's a comparison of the Angels Camp sewer rates with CCWD. Current rate is $71.92 per single-family equivalent dwelling unit. And then you can see option one is $80.08, option two, $82.94, option three, $79.28. And compared to, CCWD charges $89.96 for residential and $88.13 for commercial or non-residential customers. And they define that per single-family equivalent dwelling unit. So they may assign multiple dwelling units per non-residential customer. So currently, the current and proposed rates compare favorably to CCWD.
A question about the comparisons that you've made to other districts?
Yes.
If I look at the low end of the scale and I see Don Pedro, and they're able to charge a rate like that, give me an idea of what size and scope we're talking about, and age of the plant, why is there a cost difference?
Right. So Don Pedro is actually a Mariposa County service area. And we were actually consultant for them, and they had a couple rate protests on their 218. And so if you get more than 50% of the parcels protesting your 218 notice, then you can't go forward with the increase. So some of these actually had increases. Yosemite West is one of the agencies that was able to do an increase, but Don Pedro was not. And part of that is because there's only about 20 dwelling units. So someone could easily go door-to-door and get protest.
So it's a very small system?
Right, it's tiny, and it's basically, the county's losing a ton of money.
So of the ones that are on here, which of these are really comparable to us? Beginning with the ones that are in the same kind of price range?
Yeah, and it's always kind of an apples-to-oranges comparison because every agency is a bit different, depending on the age of their facilities and so forth. So it's, you're never going to get an apples-to-apples comparison.
Fair to say that San Andreas' age of the plant's probably about the same as ours?
Right, it'd be tough to say.
All right, thanks. Pardon me?
San Andreas, they did not pass their 218.
Yeah, but what kind of a rate were they looking for?
Much higher, I couldn't quote it.
Okay, all right, got it. Thanks, Debbie.
But in terms of population, had the 218 not happened, they were looking at considerable increases. Okay. Does council have any questions or comments about the section of the presentation before, or do you want me to turn it over to public before you?
Are you saying, do we want to discuss the options, are you saying?
Or do you want me to go to public comment?
Then public.
Okay. Is there any public comment on the section of the presentation?
Once again, I'd like to say that as a suggestion to the council, it's so important to agree on what are the capital improvement projects. Because in this plan, you're seeing, you're committing the city to spend $800,000 a year on new capital projects every year for the next 10 years. You better the heck know what those projects are and the validity of them. Also, another $200,000 is showing up on the budget, that's in table number three, for professional services. It's not there now. So just like on the water, now we have a new charge of $200,000 that has to be compensated to, by revenue increases. I'd like to also ask the, this is technical stuff, and you better find this out. What is the present capacity of the wastewater treatment plant? And how is it being impacted by I&amp;I? Remember I told you that little story about in 2005, 2006, how the wastewater plant was overwhelmed by water, I&amp;I water? That's what cracked sewer lines. So that cracked sewer line is so extremely important to make sure. The council members need to find out, how's our I&amp;I during this wet period? How's that looking? Is it down? And if it is, if it's up, where is it coming from? And that's got to be a focus to spend that money of $600,000 every other year. In my own personal case, I'm really bothered by the fact that right now I'm at $72 a month, and after five years, I'm going to be at $117 a month. And that's a 63% increase in my rate over five years. What am I getting for that? So those are the kinds of issues that I have as an individual. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment or question? Nope, okay. I will bring it back to council for questions, comments about the presentation.
On the low-income piece, I know we didn't come to that yet, but I seem to recall some discussion that it wasn't likely we were going to be able to do that, but it looks like we can now. Did something change, or did I just not remembering that correctly?
So I think what the proposal is, is that we utilize the late fees that we collect $20,000 per year. And so I believe the budget works out, currently, we utilize those late fees to support operations. But with the increase, now potentially, we may be able to utilize that $20,000 for a low-income rate assistance program.
And that satisfies all the requirements of the law with respect to how you fund these kind of programs?
Right, yes. The bottom line is you can't use rate revenues to fund the discount, but you can use what we call non-rate revenues. And late fees are a perfect example of that.
Okay. Great.
So back to the options that were given. Does council have questions about any of them?
I know, one, it has a lower rate after the full-time, you know, $113 instead of $117. But then, three is a more gradual process, you know, over the year, over the years. So I'm kind of between one and three.
Which one was it that differentiated between in the commercial?
Number two and three have the domestic strength and the high strength.
Right, wasn't that like what type of business you have?
Mm-hmm.
I have mixed feelings on which way that can go, and I, you have to look at the big picture. I was trying to.
Can we include the domestic strength and the high strength in option one? And the reason I'm saying that is because a commercial entity that maybe is a retail versus a commercial entity, they maybe, a restaurant, is going to fluctuate on what capacity they're going to be using the system.
Right, yes. So for this, you can kind of do a commercial domestic versus high strength in option one, or you could have the differential in the residential classes, but have a uniform rate for the commercial or industrial. So you have some flexibility in terms of what you want to do.
You know, just a comment on that option three, and being sensitive to what Jack said about where you end up at the end of year five. This is a slower approach to it, which might be a little less painful, but it also needs to, there needs to be in our public presentation, a real focus on the fact there's been no rate increases for 10 years. You know, I mean, we say that in the beginning, but it needs to be a recurring theme, I think, in our presentations. That doesn't mean the number still isn't big, but, you know, if you pro-rated that over 15 years instead of five, it would have been a little different. So, and the other thing, correct me if I'm wrong, the 2009 rate change was actually a decrease. Was that water or wastewater?
I believe that was both.
It was both. You know, so there was a backward slide there. So it's truly been a decade since we did anything. So, you know, it's a recurring theme, but I like three just because it's a little less of a jump.
Everything I'm seeing on here, it looks like they're all between, and I'm talking about the residential users on all three, are an increase each year between $8 and $10? For the most part, is there anything residential, is that the base number I'm seeing?
Yes, for the single-family, that's right.
For the single-family, okay.
Michael, can you speak a little bit to me about the reserve issue and how that comes into this? Jack threw out the $6 million, that was in wastewater? Those $6 million, is that dedicated to projects already? Or is it truly a reserve rainy day money?
Right, the $6 million is in the water fund, and that is, I believe, dedicated, a large portion of that is dedicated to capital projects because it was generated by capacity fees.
So it's a question of not having pulled the trigger on programs yet?
Right.
And a lot of that was due to not having enough revenue that we were cautious the last few years to start spending those money on the project due to the high risk of emergencies that we wouldn't be able to pay both at the same time, correct?
No, I believe that to be the case.
Yes, okay.
I think when we look at the project delivery over the past few years, and, you know, Matt highlighted the number of projects that we had planned to implement, and we didn't have any forward movement on. And I think it was maybe because of council's concerns about the economic instability without a rate increase. And so we haven't moved on those projects. But it's my understanding that the $5.9 million that we have is spoken for with existing projects, and that $5 million, as Matt explained, could be utilized right away just with the water treatment plant project we are currently in environmental design on. So, and I think when we look at the phasing strategy, we're definitely looking at that beginning balance and spending it down considerably over a five-year period. And so I think that that justifies the deficit spending that they've identified within those tables. And then we have the fund balance to then afford that deficit spending and deliver those projects.
I'd also like to remind the council, you have operational reserves that you're legally required to maintain. So many times, it looks like you have millions of dollars on the books, but the millions of dollars aren't available to you because you can't continue to operate your enterprise if you go too low. So, to put it in context, I think that when we look at $6.5 million for a jurisdiction like this, sounds like a lot of money. But when you're talking about your water operations and how expensive these line items are, you don't have a lot of money. Which is why you're seeing these increases be reflected as to what they are.
Well, that explanation needs to be in the public presentation material. There needs to be a recurring thumb, you know, I mean, a recurring theme about how we do that and why we do what we do.
Yeah, because people look at $6 million, and $6 million is a lot of money.
It is, and so you can only spend like $500,000 of it.
Exactly, exactly. And, you know, let's face it, the general public doesn't know that. And we have to make it very clear because, you know, I know that I get a lot of, you know, well, there's all this money.
How do you present these options publicly? Or do you, or do you just take our direction with a particular focus?
I think that is the next step. So my hope is that I could seek your direction on engaging Destination Angels Camp on the marketing of this. I think with your direction now, we have some options to take to the community. And I would like to work with Debbie Pawnee and Destination Angels Camp to develop an outreach strategy. I think we have all the information that we need from you now to take to them these recommended options and get a feeling for where they are. But I would really like to work with DAC and develop that strategy, develop that messaging. I think you've given us several focus points. And having worked with them on Measure C, they were very successful on developing those talking points. In preliminary discussions with Debbie, she's offered to not only help to coordinate small group meetings, one-on-one meetings, but also develop the tip sheet, similar to how they handled Measure C. And so I think that through that information, we'll nail all those points that you've brought up, Joe, as critical messages. But I think that that would be my recommendation moving forward, is to come back to you in February with an agreement with DAC for continued outreach with the community.
I have a question, too. Oh, I was wondering, do you want us to choose one of the options for wastewater, to have to kind of finish that?
I think if you do have direction on a preferred alternative, that would be great. Because that's where we'd like to start with the community.
Like option one.
Well, like three for the same reasons I stated earlier.
What is your, just, you know, let me hear your reasoning for, I mean, I'm sorry.
Reasoning, everything is kind of, well, they are the same on single, mobile, and multifamily. It's also cheaper at the end for every user, instead of $117 for single-family. It is cheaper on the mobile home. And on the commercial, it's a flat carry. I don't know how, I don't understand the high-strength, domestic strength. I mean, is a high-strength a solvent factory? And a domestic strength is a clothing store? You know, so I mean, I'd understand a solvent factory, you're going to charge quite a bit to dump whatever they got coming down. But where are those line, you know? This one's just more, a little more cut and dry to me, I guess. Option one, just a little more cut and dry on all commercials lumped in at $142.73. If that's.
It's hard to see the $257.50, and I know high-strength, but, you know, again, business owners are going to talk to each other and say, you pay what? Wait a minute, I pay this.
Right. This one's just a little more clear to me. Everybody's on the same pay scale, or the same rate.
It's difficult.
That's my only reason behind it.
I don't know that we have consensus yet.
I'm kind of leaning this direction from what Alvin is convincing me.
I personally would like to see more of the domestic strength and high strength utilized under option one, or if they took some kind of a, because the biggest complaint I hear from commercial is, well, why do I have to pay the same rate when they're using more volumes of water? And so I think that's going to be one of the feedbacks we're going to get back from the community. And I just would like to understand those, how can we address some of those concerns more? I do favor option one, but I feel that there is going to be some pushback on some of those things if we're not conscientious about addressing those from a public perspective. Did that give you guys enough?
So we could, what's up?
Can I amend mine? Or go ahead, you go.
So we can take those two options, we can start some public discussion about those, and then between Debbie and I, we could report back to you as to what we're hearing from the community on the range of those two options.
Yeah, it's going to be middle on both.
Am I to understand that the, on option three, the domestic strength, high strength, cannot be incorporated over into the option one and replace the lumped commercial and industrial?
It can.
You can?
Yeah.
That's what I'd like to see.
And that's what I would be more in favor of, somehow modding them.
Right.
I think, though, I'd like to also see what the feedback would be like from the businesses on the two different curves. I guess they would probably love the one that shows with the $142 versus.
No, I'd like to know.
But I'd like to know, yeah, their feedbacks. So I'd kind of like to see if.
They produce a lot of sales tax for us.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that too.
So we can talk about that with the community, and we can report back to you.
What do you see as a timeline to get to the 218 process?
So I think the timeline that I just have outlined, potentially, and I'll work on Michael and his team with this, but I'd like to come back with a public outreach contract with Destination Angels Camp at the first meeting in February. Then we will also come back with updated tables. I'll be prepared to present those based on the direction that you've given us tonight. So that will become the basis for our community outreach. And then I would anticipate the nearest date that we could get anything to you would be the March 19th meeting. And Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, but at that meeting, they need to adopt the rates at which point I notice the 30-day public hearing and the Prop 218 hearing from the date in which they adopt the proposed rates. Is that correct?
Right. You can either just get council's blessing and then notice the rates, and that might take two weeks to get the rates noticed, or you can adopt a resolution to it of intent to adopt the rates, doing it kind of more formally.
Okay, so I think at the earliest I could get either action before you would be March 19th, which then, if I am able to move quickly, I wouldn't get a 218 hearing until mid-April. How does that feel for you, Michael?
Right, that sounds good.
Okay. And then that would be an expedited outreach process. I think with Destination Angels Camp, from Contract Award, February 5th, through the next council meeting that we have, March 19th, we can still do outreach all the way up until the 218 hearing in April.
How does the council feel about that timeline?
I think it's reasonable.
Yeah.
I'm just going to use that as input.
And then also just make a clue that including the public to reach out to staff during this time to meet up in groups and get some of the question concerns out there. So just make an emphasis out of that, that we are welcoming the public to come in and contact cities or DAC when they're contracted awarding. With that, before we close the presentation, is there any further public comment, questions about this? Yes?
Just a quick comment related to your general plan and affordable housing. Just to notice that option two and three were the ones that did look at mobile homes and apartments as having a slightly lower rate, which would help your affordable housing provisions for wastewater. So just to throw that out. So just to throw that out.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay. Okay. Do you have anything?
So there's just a low-income discount that we didn't discuss here.
Mm-hmm. Yes, thank you.
So the city could implement a low-income rate assistant program, like, as we talked about, but the rates must be funded from non, the rate discount must be funded from non-rate sources of revenue. So we've identified approximately 20,000 per year from late fees. So eligible for residents enrolled in the PG&E care program, there are about 620 PG&E care customers in the City of Angels Camp, so that would amount to up to a $2.68 per month low-income discount for water and $2.68 per month for sewer.
I think, given our experience with, with the waste management, I mean, not the waste, Cal Waste Conference, that's an essential part of what we're doing here.
Absolutely, and I think with your direction on that implementation of the low-income discount program, I think that it's gone well in our communities, and we have a template for implementing it that I believe we could replicate. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've got to find out when I'm at again.
I know.
Have a good one, too.
Sixty?
We'd be going back to three now?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, yes, now back to our regular schedule programs, we'll go back to, to our agenda before it was amended. So with that, I am going to go back and go to public comment. If there's any public comment not related to the agenda? Nope? Okay, moving on. What?
I'm just next.
You're next, report out of process? Yes, okay, and then item number four, report out of process, direction was given us.
Yep, Mayor and Council, direction was given to staff, that no reportable action was taken.
Okay, item five, consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. Is there any council discussion?
I'd like to pull B for a brief question or two.
Okay. Is there any public comment related to consent agenda? Okay, is there a motion to approve A and C of the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Go ahead. I'll move.
Do you second it?
To approve. Yes.
Okay, so.
Second.
Got it?
Got it?
No, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item.
For Emily, I, I like that beginning balance, inputs, outputs, ending balance, that's good. I want, just for my understanding, that's the general accounts checking, checklist?
Yes.
And how many?
It's not just the general fund, though. It's not a general bank account. There are many funds in that.
So within those outputs, checks written, those go to sub-accounts in water, wastewater, whatever it is?
Yes.
Okay, so this is just a picture of our cash on hand, beginning and yet.
Yeah, it ex, I can tell you what it excludes is our UPA trust fund, our Green Horn Creek funds.
The LLD thing?
Not LLD, it does include LLD, the, the assessment district, and UPA, and then, and then there's a, an extra payroll account that is no longer in use since that is just generating interest, and so that's not included on here.
Okay, thank you, that's kind of what I was looking for, I don't know about anybody else, but I'd like, I'd like to see it in that format.
Do you like it?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it looks good.
Very good, very glad, thank you.
Good job.
Any public comment? Okay, is there a motion to approve consent agenda item B?
So moved.
So second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so regular agenda, we are now going to skip down to stick B, which is council appointments.
So staff recommends approval as of the council appointment, as identified on the kind of 2019 roster.
Are there any concerns or questions with what, I did this based off of paperwork and conversation with council members on what they wanted? If there's no concern, discussions, then I'm just looking for a motion to approve this. I sat down and worked with Susan on it, so.
Well, I'm good with it, I move to approve as drafted.
Oh, yep, sorry, I need to back up and do public comment.
Oh.
Is there any public comment on the committee selection?
I'm sure you're going to have a better.
Okay, okay, going back to motion.
I move to approve as drafted.
One second.
All in favor?
All right.
And then there's a couple times on there that may need to be adjusted, like DAC?
Okay, well, let's talk about that, and I do, I do want to tell Joe and, and Alvin that LAFCO has moved their January meeting to the 28th of January.
Okay.
Because.
It's a holiday, isn't it?
It's a holiday.
And then DAC is at 8:30, not 10:30, correct?
No, it's 10:30.
It's 10:30, isn't it?
DAC. DAC.
No, not DAC.
No, not DAC.
DAC, sorry, DAC, sorry. I was wondering, my bad.
Destination Angels Camp board meeting is the third Thursday at 8:30 a.m. The board voted for that change last month.
Susan, did they do this, do you know the February date for LAFCO? Because they got, they have the same problem, it's President's Day, or whatever, or did they?
You'll know, I'll find out.
Okay.
And I will let you know.
Okay, will there be a motion on the, oh, we don't need to do a motion for that, or anything? Okay, for amendment, okay. Um, where am I at? Okay, regular agenda item, 6C, acceptance of the annual report on development impact fees. Emily?
Hello, so on December 21st, there was a public notice issued that the development impact fee report was made available to the public, it was posted on our website and available at City Hall. So we were required to have it available to the public for review for a certain amount of time before the council reviews, and so I am now presenting to you the report for you to accept, and there are requirements, and they are listed for your reference in the last two pages of the report, you can look at those. What is required is the fifth fiscal year following, well, every five years, if there's any funds remaining that are more than five years old, you need to make a finding, and the, what's, what's required with the finding is listed on the last page, identify the purpose for which the fee will be put, demonstrate the reasonable relationship between the fee and the purpose for which it is charged, identify the sources and amounts of funding, and designate the approximate dates which funding is necessary to complete, and so we have two funds that require the council to make a finding, and those are outlined in the, as a traffic impact fee fund and the water connection fee fund, and there is included with each of those reports, our water master plan, and also the, there was the traffic projects schedule to include as a part of your finding.
How far back do some of these go beyond five years? Do we know?
Um, I do not have the information, our current software only goes back so many years, and some of it is put in from there, I can look into it, if you'd like.
Okay, all right, you know, it just kind of gets to activity that's, you know, slipping and not getting done, and.
Right.
And maybe your cast of thousands that you have with staff can.
It's really very minimal prior to five years.
Okay.
As far as for traffic impact fees.
But, yeah, some, some explanation for, is there a way to move this stuff forward that, that's kind of getting old?
Right, and so for the water fees, I believe in Emily's report, she mentions that we're currently in the planning stages for the water, one of the water projects. So of the amount identified in water, we do have the multimillion-dollar water plant improvement that we're working on. I believe it was in the three to five million dollar range, and we're currently in environmental and design, so we're moving forward one of those capital projects. But I believe that capital project delivery on both the water and the wastewater has been stagnant for a number of years, and so that is something that I'm looking forward to, is the allocation of resources to our engineering team, so that we could not only deliver those projects, but apply for the funding that we need to deliver our capital improvement plan. So that's my goal, my strategy, but we are in environmental design on the water projects, and then we are actively advancing a number of our transportation projects, and one of the challenges that we look at when it comes to the transportation funding component of it, is the percentage of the dollar per fees to those projects. So in some cases, it's only 20% of the project is covered by development fees, and so the city is actively looking for the remaining 80%. So we are able to justify retaining these funds because we do have the capital project need, and then we do have a plan for the delivery of those projects. And it has been the council's direction as part of our strategic planning, that infrastructure is a critical component and goal, especially water and wastewater. So I don't know if that's the best answer, that's the answer that I have for now.
I can also say that it is not unusual for cities to hold on to funds longer than five years, most of the times the projects that you, that we need to accomplish require much more than we can collect in five years, so it's not an unusual thing for us to hold on to these funds longer. It's a long list of projects.
There's no risk of losing them or anything, correct? There's no risk of losing them or anything?
No, you just have to identify them as a finding, and that we have projects, and we're saving up for all these future projects, that's all you have to do.
They've been found, hold on to them.
Let's have to get us more.
So you need a motion to approve, or just?
You'd accept the annual report, so you want to motion?
Okay, is there a motion of public comment, sorry?
Oh, sorry, public comment.
Yeah, is there any public comment? Nope, okay, is there a motion to accept?
Yes, third time, yes. Okay.
I'm able to accept.
It's been a long night.
Annual report on development impact fees and adopting findings to commit funds held in the traffic impact fee fund and water connection.
I'll second that, long motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five o. Okay, so, next is the downtown parking signs, and I think Kevin, Kevin will be giving a presentation on this.
Good evening, tonight I'm asking council to consider two items, one downtown parking sign in the historic district, and the second being the funding request for the street signs in Angel Oaks and Green Horn Creek. So starting with the parking sign, the Raspberry Parking Lot is considered underutilized and currently has a parking sign that is difficult to locate. It's on like the second story of a building that it took me a while to even find and notice it was there. So something we want to do, and that the Main Street Plan calls for, is to do more, or just a more visible parking sign. Currently, the Main Street Plan calls for two parking signs, the intersection of Main Street and Raspberry and Hard Scrabble. One of them is for the Raspberry Parking Lot, the other one's for the Vallecito Lot. However, the Main Street Plan has bulbouts included in it, which pushes the sidewalk out into the street to make pedestrians more visible, especially when you have on-street parking. So without those bulbouts, I had to look at an alternative location, because we have been getting complaints about this, or about the lack of parking towards the Raspberry Street. So one of the locations I found that was the most visible for traffic coming in both directions was in the rendering that I provided you. It is in front of the visitor's center. I already submitted encroachment permit to Caltrans, they approved it based on two conditions, one, we install and maintain the sign, sign in perpetuity, and two, we check ADA requirements and fill in ADA certification. I've already looked into ADA, along with the building inspector, and it seems that it will meet ADA requirements.
So we wanted to bring this to the council, we have the initial rendering that you see below, it's a variation from the Main Street Plan, so we just wanted to make sure that you were aware, it's an alternative location, and then also Kevin wanted to make sure that you were aware of the size of this physical sign and its location.
It is a six-foot tall sign by almost two feet wide. It will be brown, like the brown signs you see for like historic parks or even parks in general. The park lettering itself will be white, and then it'll have the blue parking symbol.
It's almost eight feet off the ground to start with.
Yeah, and you have to, for ADA, they do everything under 80 inches, so we kind of clear ADA requirements once we go over that 80 inches, so it kind of helps us, but yeah, it is pretty high up the ground.
So this was to address a community concern that parking is an issue in the historic downtown, when we're where staff is underutilized parking spots and, and them not being appropriately identified. We do not have the resources or the capacity to implement the design that's in the Main Street Plan, so we wanted to bring to you an option, and we believe that the Calvers Council of Governments could assist with the funding of this, this parking sign. So we just wanted to make sure you were aware of the pros and cons and not veer off the plan without council people.
So, in these, it's over by the visitor's center, and this one?
There's two in that rendering, the one on the left is for the Raspberry Parking Lot, the one on the right is for the Vallecito Parking Lot.
Ah, do we have the Vallecito one as well? Do we have the Vallecito one as well?
Um, no, because once again, the bulbout's not there, so.
No place to put it there?
Not really.
About the bulbout, huh?
Yeah, it, it makes it difficult visibility-wise for travelers in both directions.
And I think until we start having a better plan on what we're going to do with the Vallecito, with the end of creek trail, it seems a little advanced to orders, something like that, right now, correct?
Um, I mean, yeah, it's, it's a big sign, we would have to go three feet into the ground, I already did the calculations for the footing, so it, it's a big sign for possibly not a temp, or a permanent location.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
I think it looks great, and I think you've done a great job in finding a reasonable solution that can address some of the current issues that we, we have.
Thank you.
I don't have any objections, I think it looks good.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, because it's definitely needed.
Sure. Is, at this point, is there any public comment related to this individual parking sign?
I was wondering, are we including, is also the Angel Oaks, Greenhorn Creek? Is that going to come up too?
You're going to present that out?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to do it next.
So what you have before you, and what Kevin presented, is something that the city, in partnership with Destination Angels Camp, put together on the wayfinding, which was identified that, you know, our signage throughout town is inconsistent, or in some cases, not even there to help the traveling public find, um, services such as restrooms and rest areas and parking and such. So, this was probably of all signs for parking the most important, because the parking to Raspberry is very poor. It's a state mandated Caltrans parking sign that is so high up on a building, you don't see it. Um, and, uh, as Kevin even mentioned, had a hard time finding it. So this is a good secondary alternative. But more importantly, um, as we go forward, I think it's important that we do take a look at some of these bulbouts. Um, we did have an incident over the holidays where somebody was hit in the crosswalk, um, and it was because that person could not be seen in the crosswalk, and there was a lot of speeding traffic. And I'm the first to tell you that I was that person hit. So it's not very fun to be hit in the parking. And so I think it's really important that we start looking at bulbouts, and start looking at the traffic downtown and slowing it down, um, because this was just, you know, a kind of a no-fault situation, um, hard to see. And, uh, when you have so many crosswalks downtown, it makes it very difficult. So I think the parking will be helpful. Um, but I really think we need to start taking a look at slowing traffic downtown, as well as taking a look at the bulbouts, because all that fits into the wayfinding plan that was identified and approved by the city council several years ago. So, another sign that I think we need to take a look at is the underutilized parking lot, um, in the back, um, behind the Angels Creek Cafe. So there's a couple of signs that are there now, but hard to see as well. So, we can continue moving forward in these parking signs. That'd be a great thing. Thank you.
One more question for Kevin.
Yep.
Um, in that sign rendering on this one?
Yes.
At the bottom, it's got little, um, icons there for ADA-related, bicycle and all that. In, in this rendering, is it suggesting that there's handicap parking up there?
So, that I think is just a general rendering. It's not specific to the Raspberry parking sign.
Yeah.
All of those, they'll indicate like whether there's restrooms, there's food. They're just little like information circles, um, medical or anything like that. I can't, I don't know the exact name of them, but for Raspberry, in particular, for that parking sign, there's really none of those facilities that'll be included on that sign.
So our sign wouldn't have any of that?
No, because, and then Raspberry's not really an ADA-friendly parking lot.
Wheelchair.
Yeah.
And a motor.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah. Should I go on to the next one then, or?
Yes.
Okay. So then, the second one is approval of funding through COG. For Angel Oaks and Greenhorn Creek, street signs, it was approved, I believe, last year for the name change of Angel Oaks Drive and Greenhorn Creek Road to the Angel Oaks, Greenhorn Creek Drive, all on one sign. So we are just looking to get the funding approved through COG. The signs, I believe I attached in my staff report, just to show you what they'd look like. They'll go all the way from Highway Four to, um, I can't remember, to Smith Flat, which is, I believe, the whole road.
So this action is to be consistent with the direction that you had given us last year. If we get our claims approved by the COG, then we will come back to you with budget amendments. Um, so you'll have an opportunity to verify that we received the funding, the cost proposals, and we'll come back with this at a future agenda.
Any council comment, question? Nope. Any public comment? Nope. Okay. Is there a motion for these items?
I'll move to approve stack, staff recommendations for ultimate locations for the parking signs and Angel Oaks, Greenhorn Creek changes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. So I just want to thank Kevin for seeing these items through, these have been around for a while, so he picked up the ball and ran with it the last few months, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. And then next on the agenda?
So we just want to take a minute to recognize Wendy. Wendy is, works in City Hall, and she has one year's experience, and many of you know Pam in the front of City Hall, and she has 15 years with the city. So, we are really grateful for them, and hopefully, we can take a moment sometime soon this month to celebrate their years of service within City Hall. But we'd just like for all of you to be aware of the employees that you have working for you, and the commitment that they give the city. And so with that, I can move into the consolidated staff report.
I ask you a question about recognition.
Sure.
Do you have a milestone recognition, uh, plaque, or do you take people to lunch, or what do you do for the different milestones?
I'm really glad that you've mentioned that, because that is one of our objectives that Susan has, is to develop a program that we might be able to do some employee recognition. Right now, we do not have a program. I think this was the first step in just, um, getting council recognition of the employees and their years, but that's a goal. It's something that we could do to celebrate employees and employee success.
Okay, great. Get on.
Okay. I think that was, it was our goal for Susan's department this fiscal year. So hopefully, we'll have something, um, shortly to let you know what we're able to do. But also, it will probably require a budget consideration. Um, and then the only budget consideration we have for employee recognition is, uh, we host food, a luncheon, our annual Christmas party. So we provide, uh, a lunch for employees only.
Additionally, I have in the past couple of years been doing a summer time, I'm sorry. Our hot dogs.
Yeah, in the summertime, I've been, um, putting together a hot dog lunch in the park, and that's been well-received by employees.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, um, in the future, encourage, uh, council members to attend those, um, 'cause it, it's nice. You get to sit down with staff and not be in a formal setting and engage with them, and it's a good, it's a good, um, good time. And really good food.
I hope that we come up with something unique and distinct. I had a chance to work for Tuolumne County, and every five years, you would get a historic photo of Tuolumne County. And so your first five years, it was a five by seven, and then 10 years, it was an eight by 10. And the, the picture got bigger the more years, and the board of supervisors would formally, um, give that to an employee dur, during a board of supervisors' meeting. So, you knew when you went to somebody's office or walked by somebody's desk, if they had their frames, the number of years that they had been with the county. So, I think, um, we're just looking for things that employees might appreciate, and that are representative of our culture, and so we hope to implement something soon.
I can give them frogs.
We could give a small frog.
Tampon. That's my idea. Tampon frog, bear. That's cool.
Yeah, and then it's, we're unique here too, because not many of our employees have offices. The majority of our guys are out on the streets with public works, water and wastewater, so, um, we want something that they can hold and appreciate as well, so...
Bobbleheads.
Bobbleheads. So consolidated report, I won't go over it, but I, I just wanted to highlight the work that our departments have been doing in the past few months. I think there's a substantial amount of action and delivery within these pages, and I'm really proud of the team, that's forming and coming together. And I think that they are all committed on delivery and on performance, and I hope that, that starts to be illustrated in our consolidated staff reports to you as the council.
A much improved-looking staff report with a lot of detail.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Is that, uh, a couple of quick questions for, for the chief. Uh, in his next report, would you ask him to include some examples of, as that grant goes forward for that home land security thing? What's, what's typical of what the federal government would approve the expenditures for?
Okay.
And then for the, the workaround on the contingency for the bridge washing out, is there any potential at all for some kind of grant for fire access? You know, explore that a little bit.
Okay.
I have a question also from it, on the Utica Hotel. Um, I was, I know that they were trying to get water for a sprinkler system, and, and I was just wondering kind of some update, or, I don't know, Kevin knows now, if they could have some update on just kind of what's happening there.
So if I could, um, take a moment, I have a conflict of interest on this project. Um, I have a family member that's involved in fire sprinkler construction work and specifically tied to this project. So we've let the property owners know, the project managers know, staff are aware, but it's been coming up considerably. So now I've completely recused myself from the entire project. So I'll take this moment to leave the room, if that's okay, so that staff can report to you on the update on that question.
And you're the proxy for Melissa on this? You're the dedicated staff member that...
Well, I've, I've kind of been working with it, so I can...
So, uh, a letter was to support a legal counsel, they go out naming the proxy for, for myself. So, um, the project applicants will be working with Amy Augustine. They'll be working with our building official. If there's concerns, it'll be elevated, um, to, beyond our building inspector, I'm sorry, to our building official, Will. And then if there are concerns beyond that, it will come to the mayor, council, and potentially legal counsel.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So now we know who to go to. Did everybody got that one? Okay.
Okay, Kevin.
So just regarding the fire sprinklers, or the whole Utica Hotel?
We have, uh, anything with, is it water problem now? Is it, I just didn't know if it was anything with the main water problem down on Main Street?
So, well, they're not going on Main Street. They're going on Bush Street, behind.
Okay.
Um, so they'll be coming off from that street. It's a six-inch line, I believe. They initially, Cisco initially submitted plans that we looked over, myself, Nathan, and Building and all them, and they just needed to be done, redone completely. Just, they didn't really match up with the project, so we had them actually redo them. They resubmitted. It looks a lot better, but we're kind of at an issue now where it's an old AC line, water line. So, we really only want them to tap into it once, versus doing two taps, then you'd have to separate it so far apart, or else if you do them too close, the water line can break. So one of the issues right now that they're looking into is calculating the size that they need to tap into that six-inch line. Um, they believe a four-inch will work. We're kind of, and if they do a four-inch, they'll just hot-tap it, so they won't have to shut down the line. But we're kind of debating on whether or not to do the four-inch versus just shut down the line for a couple hours, put a six-inch tee in there, and then running a six-inch line towards them, and then we split that line to, one of them will be for fire, and the other one will be for domestic. Um, I'm not sure exactly. I know it's a four and a three-inch line. I'm not sure which one's fire and which one's domestic, off the top of my head. Um, but that's where we're kind of at right now.
Can, can it be, uh, I just was wondering on timing. I know there's been a struggle for the Utica, and they were hoping to open in February, last I heard, and now, you know, it's, keeps getting pushed. Is there any way, I don't know, is it priority? Kind of where does it sit with you?
So, we recently just discovered a fee in our improvement standards that we were never charging. It got brought to our attention a couple of months ago. We've been working on Utica Hotel for over four years, closer to five years, just for this Phase One and the sprinklers. During that time, this fee that we found was never collected from them. All we got, I believe, was the building permit fee, which is minimal probably, in consideration with the working time we put into it. So we told them, until we get this fee paid, we're going to kind of pump the brakes on this project. Uh, they just paid us this fee, so now we're going to kind of get the ball rolling again, and hopefully, get this Phase One and the sprinklers completed fairly quickly.
Oh, good. Good to hear.
So, yeah, but there was just a lot of time and effort in on our end that wasn't getting reimbursed.
Yeah, I know. I mean, it isn't, you know, it's one-sided, you know, it's, I know that, I understand all that. I was just kind of trying to find the update if they've kind of gotten through the next whatever, because it's been one thing after another.
Yeah, so they paid the fee, and then we got the most updated plans last week. So hopefully, we can start processing those plans.
All right, good. Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you, Kevin.
Can we bring Melissa back in?
Yeah, leave her up there.
We're thinking of just leaving her there.
Yeah, you can watch a little TV.
Well, last time I left at the planning commission, I went, I chose that door, and I was sitting outside freezing. So I learned my lesson. I'm choosing that door. Okay.
Are there, are there council questions, comments about the consolidated report?
Mm-hmm.
I have one question for Nathan. Um, for the emergency, uh, alternative access, is Tryon and Depot the same?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't...
Is Tryon and Depot the same? I was thinking that there was also an emergency access through Depot as well.
Uh, not, not to my knowledge. Um, I, I think it dead-ends. Depot would, would, actually turns into Moose Trail, and then Moose Trail dead-ends. Um...
Okay.
Not, not to my knowledge. And I, I think you can, if you had the right vehicle, you could probably make access through Tryon's property, but, um, you wouldn't be able to access it with a fire engine, that's for sure. It's off-road.
Okay. I'm just asking, because in the past, it's always been brought up as an option, so it just...
If there's something out there, I'd like to know though, so, if you find out.
Yeah, I've always been told, or, that there was an option to go that route. Now, whether or not that, the reasoning behind why we haven't, I don't know.
Yeah.
But I just wasn't sure if there was a reason why we weren't further looking into that route as a emergency access.
Well, I'll, I'll be happy to look into it a little bit more, see if I can find out something.
Okay. Thank you. Um, that was the only question I had. If there's no other, is there any public comment? Nope. Okay. So, on to calendars, Susan.
No, I just wanted to do correspondence and council reports.
Oh, sorry. I, I'm sorry, correspondent.
So I've just, um, provided a copy of the brief summary Citygate did for us, and my goal is to come back to you guys in February with some objectives on the eight goals that they identified. So I just wanted to let you know. It's a brief summary that you have in correspondence, and hopefully I'll give you some, you know.
Okay, and then, um, council reports, and I was stuck to my left.
No, of course.
Um, with respect to UWP A, uh, two issues. One, Michael referenced a rather long outage on the system, but, uh, you may have noticed the creek has, has risen because the power plant's running again, um, in Angels and Murphy, so, that's, uh, that was a long ordeal, but they got a lot of work done during that outage, and they're really to be commended for that. And, uh, that's it.
Um, to add to Joe, uh, with Utica Water and Power, Michael has accepted a job as a general manager with CCWD, so, um, UPA will be looking through recruitment process to replace Michael's position in the future.
And nothing to report?
I have nothing to report.
Okay.
If I might, uh, give an update, I just wanted to let the council and the community know, we are aware that the Christmas decorations are still up. We had planned to take them down some weeks ago, but the boom truck that we utilized to get them down broke down. And so, we are exploring options to lease a truck, and then we are also working on getting our truck repaired. So it's our goal to have them down by the first of February.
How high do you need to reach?
You should just light them up.
So, um, it's, it's all the decorations on 49th through town.
So it's, it's all the decorations on Forty-Ninth through town, all of those decorations. The swags.
Just out of curiosity, those loads have bucket, you know, those little small things that you can go up them? Yeah, thank you.
So we talked to Roger today about scissor lifts and he said that that didn't provide him the capacity to get across the highway in sufficient amount of time and that he would have to completely shut down the highway utilizing a scissor lift to get them down. I think the way that they utilize the boom truck, they don't have to shut down the highway. So we are aware, we are starting, I believe, to receive complaints at City Hall, but we are doing everything that we can to make sure that we get them down. And we apologize because we know it doesn't, it doesn't feel good to, at this late date, to still see Christmas decorations.
Which Caltrans position on helping us out with this with one of their bucket trucks? They just don't do that kind of thing?
I don't know, I'm not sure that we've asked Caltrans. I think the options that we've explored are two local companies that we've done work with, maybe leasing, and then also just the cost of leasing a truck. Roger is aware of a potential partnership with Greenhorn Creek that they may actually be doing some light work on the lights in the LLD. So we might share an expense of one rental. So we're looking at what alternatives we have if we're not able to get that truck fixed quickly.
What about the ladder truck?
I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm going to come up with a lot of ladder trucks. But I think risk management has said, I don't think that that would be appropriate. But poor Nathan has been approached multiple times on sending a firefighter up the ladder truck. I think the joke was they would even put a stuffed kitty on.
You need training.
So they could get the cat off the, well, Christmas light, so, but, um.
Okay. Thank you. And now we can do calendars, right?
Yep.
Okay, tomorrow, January sixteenth, at nine AM, there's IRWMA and also CPPA meetings. The seventeenth, at eight-thirty AM, is museum commission meeting. Ten-thirty AM is DAC Executive Committee meeting. City offices are going to be closed on the twenty-first for Martin Luther King Day. The twenty-second, at five-thirty, UWPA. And then the twenty-eighth, at six PM, is LAFCO. And we meet back here for council on the fifth of February.
So just so the councils are aware, I do have a staff person attending the IWR MPA.
MA.
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 Are you going?
I was going to go, but if you want to, you can go.
Yeah. Tomorrow at nine?
Nine. And Kevin will be attending on behalf of the city.
Awesome, thank you. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move. Or second?
Second, first second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I know, I know, it's like, I'm, it's, oh, it's Linda and you, do you want?
No, I just couldn't make it.